The 6:00 PM City Council Meeting of June 4th, 2024. All council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Chaburka, who's asked to be excused, and joining us online virtually, we have Vice Chair White. If you'd like to say hello.
Yeah, no, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. We can hear you. That sounds good. We'll begin our meeting here with a Pledge of Allegiance, and I've asked Councilmember Myers to lead us in that.
Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. At this time, we'll take, just observe a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. Do we have acknowledgements from the council that we'd like to recognize at this time? I think I would just say the Union Station, the cornerstone ceremony was quite interesting, and we learned that at one point in time, and maybe at some point in time, it'll come back, that Ogden was known as the Minneapolis of the West. So that was a tagline they used at some point. So, but good job to those and for Hope Aggett leading that, and a lot of good information shared on that event. Okay, first, we have a request to be on the agenda. We'd like to invite Raquel Goldrup to come up to the podium here and talk. She represents the Cash Refugee and Immigrant Connection.
Hello, I'm assuming, I'm just, okay, perfect, okay, thank you. Okay, um, thank you for having me here. Like you said, I'm from the Cash Refugee and Immigrant Connection, which is the resettlement agency up in Logan, Utah. So my purpose in presenting to you is to spread awareness of this program and to ask for your endorsement in spreading the word about it. So it might feel like a little bit of a fire hose, just because of the time we have, but I'll stick around after in case anyone has any questions. Where do I point this to? Just this button, right? Okay, there we go, thank you. Okay, so the Welcome Corps is a new service opportunity for Americans to sponsor refugees seeking freedom and safety and to strengthen their own communities. So this program was released nationwide last January, so it's about a year and a half old, and it's a public-private partnership that's inspired by what America represents to so many around the world, a beacon of hope and refuge. So the Department of State, the Bureau of Population Refugees and Migration, partners with these resettlement agencies across the country to help run this program. So the purpose of the Welcome Corps is to equip and empower everyday Americans to welcome refugees independent of and complementary to the existing work of resettlement agencies, and to enable organizations to support them in that welcoming work. Already, just in the year and a half that the Welcome Corps has been live, we've had more than 15,000 Americans sign up to sponsor more than 7,000 refugees. So just a quick definition of what refugees are: they are people who've been forced from their home country due to persecution or fear of persecution based on race, religion, nationality, political opinion, or membership in a particular social group. And refugees go through a long vetting process overseas before they're able to come here to the US, and many of them have already gone through that process and are just waiting for a place to land, a community to call home, and your community can provide that. So there are a couple ways that you can sponsor refugees. You don't have to know a refugee to be a sponsor. The first avenue is to sponsor a refugee you know, so naming, so you can identify if someone has a family member or a friend that's still overseas that they'd like to sponsor, they can identify them, and there's certain eligibility criteria that they need in order to be able to be sponsored. The other option is to do what's called matching. So this is where groups get together and they are just matched with a refugee that's already gone through the process and is ready to come to the US. And matching provides sponsors and refugees an opportunity to connect to new cultures, traditions, and communities, and for other cities that are not maybe the mainstream resettlement areas to be able to host refugees as well. So matching takes into consideration your private sponsor group. Your group can choose preferences. For example, if they maybe know a language, they can put that down on the application and say, "We'd like to sponsor someone who speaks this language or is from a certain country," but we encourage all groups to be open-minded and to welcome all refugees to be able to experience new cultures. So the requirements for private sponsor groups is that the group just must include at least five US citizens or permanent residents that are living in the same community. They commit to providing resettlement services to the refugees they sponsor for the first 90 days in the US. So this private sponsor group would sort of take the place of a regular resettlement agency. They complete online training and background checks, and then do fundraising to support the resettlement effort. So the responsibilities of the private sponsor group, like I said, they do everything that the resettlement agency would do, which is, starting from the airport, pick up the family or the individual from the airport, help them find housing, help them find furnishing and household supplies, support them in documentation, applying for benefits, health services, enrolling them in school, helping them access English learning services, interpretation, just orienting them to the community, making those connections, and then transitioning from sponsorship to being able to be self-sufficient in their communities. So the functions of the group include the group coordinator, who would be kind of the point person and who turns in the application, then there's finance and employment, housing and basic necessities, benefits and healthcare, welcoming and local orientation, and education and language. So there's kind of a lot to cover, so that's why the minimum requirement is five people in the group, but there could definitely be more than that. For the fundraising portion, the group must raise at least $2,425 per refugee that they're sponsoring, just to cover things like rent, furniture, food for the first couple weeks that they're here. You only need to demonstrate 60% of the funds to submit an application, and then you can raise the rest while you're waiting for them to get here. And that fundraising can be done through any avenue. The timeline for naming can be anywhere between six months to a few years from the time the application is submitted, just because there's so much overseas processes to go through. For matching, there's not a set timeline, but it could be within a few months from when the application is submitted. And you will be supported throughout the process. So most people are not familiar with what it takes for a refugee to be resettled in the US. So private sponsor groups, like I said, they take on the role of resettlement agencies, and Welcome Corps is designed to expand the number of refugees that can come to our communities without adding to the workload of local agencies. And so agencies like Cash Refugee and Immigrant Connection, CRIC, cannot help provide those core resettlement services, but they will be there to provide support and answer questions along the way as you navigate sponsorship. So yes, that is where we come in. Cash Refugee and Immigrant Connection, we help people with their applications, guide you through the process, send reminders to complete reports, and answer any questions that you might have or that the group might have. And you can start the process today. So the next steps would be to establish your group. People, I've worked with people who get together with people from family, friends, faith communities, local organizations, anyone can, who just lives within a 20- to 30-mile radius can get together and form this group. And then you would attend an application session, a support session, complete the training. That gives you a lot of information on what services you'll be providing, as well as basic things like how to interact with people who are different than you, who might speak a different language, who might have a different culture than you. Complete the background checks, begin fundraising, sign the commitment form, and then submit the application. That was a lot of information all at once, so I am definitely open to questions. This program is incredible. We've worked with one group so far, just because it's so new in Utah, and they had an incredible experience just bonding with these people and helping them get resettled, and it's incredible, an incredible opportunity for people in our community to serve and to reach out to people who are in need. So thank you. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Raquel. So anyone listening online or reviewing this meeting later can click on that or highlight that QR code, and it'll take them to your website to
Yes.
learn more about application processes.
Mm-hmm. Yep, and you can, or you can contact us, and we can set up a time to meet. So yeah, I just appreciate the council hearing this, and hopefully we can spread more awareness. We're gonna start putting posters up, just like old-fashioned style, and if there's any other connections you think might be helpful to spread the word, then we would love to hear from you.
Any other questions, or?
I have a question. So I'm aware of several families that are divided, where the parents might be here, and they've left their children. Most of them are Venezuelans, and they've left their children in Nicaragua or Peru, different countries, and they're trying to bring their children up to be with them. Is this the type of a program that would help to those type of situations, those families, to be reunited?
That's a great question. So with the Welcome Corps, the eligibility is that they need, especially minors, need to travel, need to be traveling with a legal parent or guardian. So if, for example, those minors were with someone in a different country, and there's some sort of way to prove that they are now under the legal guardianship of someone else, and they can be sponsored as a group, then they would, they might be able to do that. There are special considerations for people of Cuban, Haitian, Nicaraguan, and Venezuelan descent. That is a little bit of a different process than the Welcome Corps.
So some of those processes you can apply through immigration and naturalization to do that. I'm particularly familiar with Venezuelans and Nicaraguans.
Yes.
So that, does that, that is something that you don't work with, or is that something that you can help apply through?
Yeah, so that is separate from the Welcome Corps. That would be more just like regular immigration. I think it would be like filling out an I-134, something like that. But the Welcome Corps, yeah, there are certain countries on the website, it says, that are either not eligible, or sometimes people have to apply for exemptions, and that's something that we've done in the past, is if maybe there's like a particular situation, you can apply for that exemption, and then they'll review it and let you know if they're eligible or not for the Welcome Corps.
Great program.
It is. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Up next, we have the Ogden City Youth Council Annual Report. I'd like to invite the youth city council members and, of course, Brandon Garside, our communications and public engagement coordinator, to come on up and share their presentation.
Thank you, council members. Before we get started, as you mentioned, Chair Reggie, my name is Brandon Garside. I'm the communications and public engagement coordinator for the Ogden City Council. Part of my responsibility is to run the Ogden City Youth Council, which this was, this has been my first year doing so. And before we get started, though, I would like to invite the members of the youth council to come up and introduce themselves to you, if that's all right. Just, we talked about it before, but name, school, grade, and your experience on the youth council. So we'll start there.
Hello, I'm Izzy Nastel. I am a senior at Ogden High School. I graduated from Ogden High School. This was actually my first year, but I was chair of the youth council.
Hi, I'm Jacqueline Valdivias Samudio. I am a graduating senior from Ogden High, and this is my first year, and I've loved it so far.
Hi, I'm Olive Barrigan. I am a freshman at Ogden High, and I was treasurer for the youth city council, and it's my first year as well.
I'm Avery Brunson. I am going to a senior. I am at Bonneville, and this is my second year, going on my third.
Hi, my name is Mark Ferreira. I'm at Bellemann High School, going to junior class.
That was perfect. Okay. Great. So what we'll first go over is, I'll just give a kind of a quick rundown of the city, of the youth city council. I see it as a three-tiered approach to the youth council, which is to give the youth opportunities to learn more about local government in which they live, opportunities to volunteer in the community, as well as develop leadership skills that they can take to college or wherever they choose to go. The schools represented this last year are shown on screen. Here are the numbers from each school, kind of varies a little bit. Ogden High with the most, with four. Only 15 applicants this past year, and attendance wasn't always 100%. That was due in part, we kind of got off to a late start. We didn't get the leadership of the youth city council established until later because of the many activities that were going on during the holidays, and so we're making some changes this year to ensure that we have a youth council leadership in place, so that we can get the ball rolling with other things that you'll hear about in a moment. This year, so far, part, one of the changes that we're making is kind of the window of time that we're allowing people to apply to the Ogden City Youth Council, and so far, this is what we have, and you see that Ogden High has by far and away the most with 12, and a lot of that had to do with a visit that we did. I tried to get in the door. Ben Lohman was unable to do so, but we'll try again once school picks back up in August. So without further ado, I'm gonna turn it over to Chair Nastel, who's gonna talk about our volunteering events.
Okay. So this was our first volunteering experience we had. It was a community Thanksgiving dinner, and what our role at this was to game the, like the games that were going for the kids. So why we did this and why it was such a big impact at this is it kind of allowed an experience for the adults that had these kids to go get the other services, like haircuts and other, like food and stuff like that, that they couldn't have done with their kids. So we manned three games. We had cornhole, plinko, and basket toss, and it was just so much fun, because sometimes the parents would come back and play with the kids, and it was just a cool experience to be able to help out the community in a way you wouldn't fully expect. Our second volunteering experience was a Christmas community dinner, which is kind of similar, but our job this time was to gather presents from people. So this was just seeing the smile brought on people's faces. It's not like we're working the games with the kids like the time before, but this was really important, because it was collecting presents and seeing all the smiles and just amazing faces that all of these people giving these presents were, had. And then just recently, we did these youth classes at the library, and this was a great experience. What we did is there was two activities. It was right before Mother's Day, and there was a lot of kids there. So why it was so beneficial to have some of us there to help is that with all these kids, some kids were being stubborn to the adults, so it was nice for them to have some teenagers that they felt like they could mess around with and make jokes about. So it was really beneficial, and I think it was a service to the kids, but it was also a service to the amazing people that ran this volunteering experience. I'd like to invite Jackie to do this next part.
Who's the kid with the beard that's napping in that photograph?
So we did this thing where Brandon doesn't know new social media, and there is this app called Be Real, and what it is, is it takes a photo of you and the other side. So I tricked him most times to take a photo of me and my friends doing these service activities when it really took a picture of him. Our leader, everybody.
Okay. Okay, and then I just wanted to talk about the Local Officials Day. So we were able to drive down with our sister city, the Hof Germany, and we were able to tour the capital and learn a bit about it, and just learn how like, kind of the workings of it, and we got to see like the chair room and everything, and then we got to see the legislative preview, and we listened to the concerns regarding housing, and we had lunch with Governor Cox, and we actually got to talk with some of you on the council, and I see some familiar faces on here. So it was actually a really fun experience. It was only Aiden and me who were able to go, but we were, we had some really interesting conversations, and we were able to talk about the housing and talk about some of the ideas we had with some of the council members, and just others, got to meet other students from other cities and youth councils. And then I will turn it over to her, Olive, sorry. So we were able to learn a little bit about certain roles that are, sorry, used, like, that are in the community, and we met Lauren Zalong, who was a sustainability coordinator, and he taught us how his, the recycling has been changing, and like how we are trying to make Ogden a little more green, and then Linda, oh my gosh, I'm gonna butcher her last name.
Lartige.
Lartige. She, she was really interesting to talk with, because she was both like diversity, like with different ethnicities, but at the same time with like those who are like not as able to do things, and like I asked about playgrounds and like opportunities for those who are intellectually disabled or physically disabled, which is really interesting to learn about some of the things that Ogden is trying to change. I'm going to go back to Jackie. There we go. Okay, so I'm just going to talk about the Ogden City Fleets and Facilities. So we were able to talk with Monica Cap and the facilities manager, resources, and we got to see how they use the resources for efficient, safe, and compliant, to be compliant with regulations of the fleet. And then in the second photo, we can see the facilities manager. We're able to see how she's responsible, and she talked to us about being responsible of keeping buildings maintained, cleaned, and safe, and we got to explore the buildings a bit more. And then in this next one, we got to see the public safety buildings, and we got to talk with the program manager and Kenny Miller, and then we have, we had a presentation with firefighter Luke, and he showed us the fire pole and how it was very effective and useful for them. And then we were actually able to see the motor vehicles, and they talked to us a bit about them being licensed and how it's different for regular civilians. And then we were able to also explore the SWAT car and see what type of experiences they would have to use that for, and how to use the different compartments for that.
Hi.
Well, you introduce yourself. Everyone else had a chance to introduce themselves.
Yeah, I know, sorry. So my name is Ellie. I'm in 11th grade, and I go to New Ames. This is probably my third year of Ogden City Youth Council, so it's been a great experience. Absolutely love it. I'm gonna call, I'm going to talk about the Golden Hours Senior Center. Before I start, I just want to say it was a really beautiful experience, because not only were we able to see Golden, the Golden Hours Senior Center, but we were also a little bit to see the library, and that just proves how connected, you know, Ogden is as a whole, is for us, to be able to meet, you know, people in charge, and they also like work together. So I thought those were a beautiful thing to see, that everyone just works together in Ogden, and, you know, makes it so much better. But, so the Golden Hour Senior Center, basically, we just took an entire trip around it. It was very, like, I want to be there. It was so fun. It was so lively. It was, her name was Ginger Myers. She's, she's an amazing person, but basically, we got to see, they have like a golf simulator there. We gotta play zombie dodgeball. Brandon is amazing at zombie dodgeball, can I say? Like, honestly, he outdid all of us. Like, he did amazing. They also have like a thrift store there, which was kind of awesome. I didn't even know it existed, but now I do, and I love drifting, so got opportunity to go in there. They have a gym, pottery and ceramics, sewing. They have a laser engraver, which is awesome. Oh, that's where the library, laser engraver. And then the library also has a teen center, and I actually used it recently with my friends, and I was like, I didn't even know this was here, you know? So it's really cool to kind of just see what Ogden has to offer behind the scenes. I actually studied for my finals in that library. So again, it was a great opportunity. We also, I think just seeing that and allowing us to know these resources exist also allows us to kind of bring life to those seniors that kind of just pop in, you know, get to know their story, their background a little bit, because I mean, I'm pretty sure everyone has an awesome story to tell. So I think knowing that was also an amazing opportunity. So, yeah. Oh, you, okay. I got you. Oh, awesome. Okay, I'm, hi again. So we have a water treatment plant. That's gonna be tomorrow. So we're all going together tomorrow to go see that. Yeah, just tomorrow, another, another fun thing to do. So we're not done yet completely, but, yeah.
All right.
All right, I'm doing the parade part. So the first one is the Piranha Parade, the Piranha Parade. That was so fun decorating. It was a blast. Like, there was lots of laughter, there was lots of random conversations off and off. We also, we got pulled by, the trailer was pulled by an electric tractor. I've never seen an electric tractor in my life, and I was like, I was like, and so as, as I saw like all the kids smiling on the side, I'm like, huh, are they smiling at us or like the tractor? And it was like, it was just fun seeing like all the different smiles, seeing that there were kids, like, and like teenagers on a trailer in a parade where like mostly there's adults, like college kids, like no teenagers, and it was cool to be able to do that. It was Western-themed. That was fun. We handed out, so we got little like horses that we're supposed to keep for ourselves, but we decided to blow them up and hand them out, like jump off and on the cart, and go and hand them to kids. And then we have the Holiday Light Parade. I wasn't unfortunately able to go. I got COVID like the week before, so I was not able to go. But when we were decorating, it took the gingerbread man that came with five strings. We had to cut an additional 20, so it stopped falling over and like eating Brandon. And again, we have a B-roll picture, and it was just, it was, it's a blast. Like, there's so many memories that come with it, laughter, and I just like, it's amazing how much we get together, and I want to have the youth, more youth come, and then we can see how fun it is, how fun we are, and how it'll help share our light. So, back to Izzy.
So just moving forward, as Brandon talked about earlier, we're doing a wider application window. As we saw, mostly it's Ogden High students, because we talked to the student body, but we have a wider application window to see if we can pull more interest from more schools, and we would love to have representation of more areas. Also, we're gonna, we've already talked about a strategy of having a more efficient election process at the beginning of the year, because it happens where throughout the year, sports happen, and all these different things that students started kind of disappearing a little bit more. So we're hoping by having the leadership process right at the beginning, it will help students feel like they want to be there, because they have a position, and it will get the most input from everyone else. And this last thing that is gonna happen next year is that we're gonna want to put together a service project to put into this challenge, the My Impact Challenge, the Bill of Rights Institution National Civics class. So moving forward, those are the three things that the youth council is focusing on. Okay, and then questions. I'm here to answer any questions. Glenn, I know you have one for me.
Does the Ogden City Council have a B-roll account now?
Honestly, just follow me, because they're all him. We should get that set up. I'll set one up for you.
All right, I've got a question for the whole group. First, this is so fun, because you're filled with enthusiasm and vigor, and you obviously had fun with this, and your sense of humor shines through. So thanks for coming to share that with us tonight. I want to plant a seed. How many of you, I want you to think about running for city council in Ogden in two years or four years at the most. Really? I ran for city council. I was 66 years old. I've never held elected office in my life. I'm gonna be done with this term. I'm gonna be 71. So I am making decisions about this city that I won't be here to live into. I'm making decisions you guys are living into. Replace me and start making decisions for your generation. It's fun, it's easy, you'll learn a ton, you're surrounded by great people. Run for city council. Think about it now. I'm talking to you, Izzy.
I love it.
All right? Okay.
I love you all already.
Find a hat, throw it over the wall, and figure out how to get over the wall to get your hat, and that's running for city council. So get on it and join us.
All right. Any other comments, or, yeah, council member higher?
Last year, our, I think the report was, I don't remember who the chair was, Zach, but you were there.
I think it was Thor. I think it was Thor.
It was Thor.
It was Thor, yeah. And, but the makeup of the city council, the youth city council last year was mostly New Ames and some of the non-
Public school.
Public schools. And that was kind of what they mentioned, they says, well, we'd like to get more public schools, looks like you, you made a complete swap.
Yes.
Uh, had that happened, and how can you, how can you homogenize the group better? How, how would that happen better?
Sure. Um, I, I feel like that was the thing, is it was so, like, I remember, because I'm from Ogden High, I'm from the public school, right? Like, I remember hearing, because my dad was the one that had the tractor, and he's like, super cool group, that like, and they talked about wanting more public schools. So I think that was the thing, it was such a reach to like widen it, that it kind of was like, oh shoot, we didn't realize that we're losing some, especially with graduating, like this year we're losing half of it, but it got filled up again with half of Ogden High because we've reached out to that school, right? So I think what's important is putting the efforts the same amount everywhere. I think we saw that where the efforts just totally flopped. So I honestly think if we talk to the private schools and public schools all together, you will still pull the same interest from each. It just is getting out there as students, talking about it. We have a few from each school, so making sure you're getting out there and talking to your advisors, but also amazing experience like Brandon came into Ogden High, and that's why we had so many. So I think setting that up at the beginning of the school year where it's getting out to also the private schools now will make that more even.
Okay, thank you. I, I do really appreciate your enthusiasm, all of you. It's been, uh, it looks like you're a little imbalanced in your, in, in your gender, a little bit maybe, but.
We actually have quite a, we have a few boys, and they usually show up. They must have been busy today.
Ah.
We have two Adens, they're great.
Keep it up, that's, that's a wonderful thing.
Council higher, it's the Year of the Woman.
Pardon?
Did you hear that?
No, I didn't hear it.
Taylor Swift, Beyonce, they're all ruling the world.
Oh, yeah.
It's the Year of the Woman.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, appreciate it. I, uh, I, yes. We, yeah, we could do a picture. I just have to say, it's, it, just a dodgeball reference, um, you know? What Brandon lacks in is, yeah, our, our communications, public engagement, lacks in social media skills, he makes up in, in dodgeball. And so, as a dodgeball reference-
Zombie dodgeball.
Bold strategy, Cotton, we'll see if it works for him.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we can get a picture with the Youth Council, if you want to come up here.
Does Eric know how to use that?
I don't know.
Wait, are we going to draft Glenn?
Glenn's in half the pictures.
Yeah, get over here, Glenn.
Oh, what a teddy bear.
He, he is kind of shy.
Maybe let's take a B-roll, call it good.
Brandon, let's see what must be real.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
All right, thank you.
Chair, if I might?
Yes.
I just wanted to thank Brandon for all the hard work that he's done. I've been, you know, we, we've had some turnover in that position, and Ross, like, two or three years ago, got started, did a great job. And, and, you know, when Warren left, Brandon was just so willing to take it and run with it, and he's just done a great job like he does with everything. So thanks to Brandon for doing that.
Appreciate that, thank you. All right. Um, up next, we have a, a special recognition, and um, we're going to have Councilmember Blair lead that.
Thank you, Chair Ritchie. I'm honored, and I feel a bit fortuitous to be able to do this. Um, I know that Vice Chair White, our Council softball aficionado, is not here tonight. So I think, um, if she was here, I don't think I'd get to do this, but, um-
I, I don't know aficionado, that's not, I don't know if I would call it that.
I think compared to us, yes. Okay. It reads, "The Ogden City Council and Mayor proudly recognize Mary Kay Amicon for her contributions to Weber State and the Ogden community. Mary Kay Amicon is a Utah softball legend and a respected figure in our Ogden community. Throughout her storied 32-year coaching career, she has built a strong culture and influenced the lives of numerous student athletes. Serving as the head coach of Salt Lake Community College, BYU, and Weber State, Coach Amicon has collected more than 800 victories, a true testament to her exceptional leadership, work ethic, and passion. During her, sorry, during her 11, um, 11 years as the head coach of Weber State University's softball team, Coach Amicon took the program to new heights. She led the Wildcats to six regular season, Big Sky regular season championships, four Big Sky tournament titles, four NCAA tournament appearances, including the Big Skies, Big Sky Conferences' only win at the NCAA Regional in 2019. Additionally, Coach Amicon was honored as the Big Sky Coach of the Year four times. She ended her tenure at Weber State with nearly 300 victories, solidifying her status as the Big Sky Conference's all-time leader in wins and percentage, wins and winning percentage. I'm assuming she's also Weber State's career wins and winning percentage record holder." Um, Coach Amicon retired at the end of the season, bringing a legendary coaching career to a close. During her time at Weber State, she epitomized the Wildcat spirit. We are grateful for her dedication to the Og, to Ogden City and Weber State University, and we wish her much success in the next chapter, chapters, of her life. We are confident that her legacy as an ambassador for Weber State and Ogden City will endure for many years to come. With that.
That is awesome. Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Congratulations, Coach.
Well deserved.
Congratulations, thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Just have her do a comments first and-
Yeah. Bring them all up?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, anybody?
You bet. I want to thank you, Councilmembers, um, for this recognition, it's an honor. Um, we like to say that, uh, these, these things aren't done alone, they're done with this great crew that has come here tonight to support, um, me in this endeavor, and also an opportunity to hand off the torch to the newly named head coach, as of today, Kristin De La House, uh, better known as Coach House. So Coach House, congratulations and good luck with everything. Um, I want to thank President Brad Mortensen, Athletic Director Tim Crompton, Senior Women's Administrator Kayla Morgan, um, Associate AD, um, Associate Assistant, what, Associate Athletic Director Will Pridemore. He's kept us out of trouble more times than you could ever know with the rules. Uh, Coaching Staff that's able to be here, um, as I mentioned, new head coach, Coach House, my, one of my best buddies all time, Coach Kevin Jensen, he snuck in here, yes? And, um, of course, my wonderful, supportive, great husband, Mark Amicon. So he's, he's lived the, the adventure of all the highs and all the lows, and I certainly couldn't have done any of this without this, this gang. So thank you so much for being here. Uh, we have two players that have come, because I think we mentioned there might be ice cream after this, yeah? J.C. Finch, um, and Abby Grundy, and they are, they have been a part of our program, and so proud of the way they represent Weber State University and i- in, in the classroom, first and foremost, but in the community. And it was interesting to watch these young people on the Youth Council because, um, Abby is our, uh, student, what is it, the SAC representative and Vice President, and I don't know what you're going to do next year, but you're doing amazing things, um, and keep up the good work. And I think that invitation to be on the council, to be a council member goes to you guys as well. So thank you very much, and yes, I'd love a picture. Thank you.
Thanks, Coach.
Great job, Coach.
One more just you really quick, right here. Like, right, look in here, one, two, three. Everybody else get it. We're doing space, I love it, now we're good.
Christmas card.
Notice, notice.
There you go, nice, okay. Look in here, one, two, three. Some insurance, one, two, three. Awesome.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Hey, Chair Ritchie, before they all leave the, the chambers, can I just say a couple of quick things?
Absolutely, go ahead.
So I just want to, Coach Amicon, I, I just want to say, and I'm sorry I'm not there, but I, I just want to say that this goes beyond the, the wins and losses. This is a, a true testament to you, uh, uh, creating and empowering such great young women to be leaders, leaders within our community, leaders into whatever the next job or whatever they're wanting to do. And I just really appreciate that because the, you know, I, I think we all believe that, um, it, it's not always been, um, easy. I'm, I'm old enough to know that, uh, Title IX was very helpful for me, and I feel as though I was very lucky, and I am glad that you are able to continue that, and wish you the best in your retirement, but, um, I'm glad you've, uh, created such a great program and these skill sets that will go beyond the playing field. So thank you very much for all that you've done, and I hope your wardrobe turns into something other than purple in the, in the near future, but-
Thank you very much.
Uh, congratulations.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thanks, thanks, Vice Chair White, and again, yeah, thank you for being here, love seeing all the, my Wildcat Club buddies out there. I miss you. Uh, but before you leave, we got to get a, Weber State, Weber State?
Great, great, great.
All right. Okay, thank you. Coach House has the, the hat on, walking out the door, yeah. Okay, up next, we have some consent items. We are, uh, looking, um, there's a Sustainability Committee appointment, and then we are setting the public hearing for four, uh, different, um, four different items. The enterprise fund transfer, the fire fee amendments, water rate and discount fee amendments, and the Fiscal Year 2025 through 2029 Capital Improvement Plan, um, all set, setting in a public hearing for June 18th. Uh, this is a consent item, I'll entertain a motion.
Chair, I'd make that motion that we, uh, um, approve the appointment of Julian Garcia for, on Item A, and, uh, to set the public hearing, uh, for June 18th on Items B, C, D, and E.
A second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember higher, and a second by Councilmember Graff. This is a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Well, welcome Glenn Simms, our Deputy Director. Uh, this is a public hearing on the Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Tentative Budget, and, um, we will first hear from Glenn Simms and then, uh, open it up for public comment on this item.
Perfect, thank you very much. Um, I apologize, this is not going to be nearly as much fun as the last two items. So, um, I, uh, gave most of this presentation to you a couple of weeks ago, and, uh, there's just one thing I wanted to update from, uh, uh, what I talked about a couple of weeks ago, and that's just this first thing here, the budget resources. Um, the rest of that presentation, uh, you heard a couple of weeks ago, so if folks want to go reference that, uh, they certainly can. Um, I'll also give some dates and, uh, some other information toward the end, uh, if folks want to go and, and dive a little bit deeper. So this first part, um, I really just wanted to talk about some of the resources that are available to folks if they, if they really want to dive in and really want to get into the budget. Um, obviously, this is a lot of information to present, um, it's a lot of information to contain in one presentation, it's a lot of information to contain in even just a handful of the work sessions that you've had. Um, but here's a list of the resources that, uh, people can look to if they want to get some additional information. Um, the Mayor's Proposed Budget Book, this is the, the actual budget that was presented to you, uh, and posted online on May 8th. Uh, the Mayor's Presentation on May 7th is also available there, there was a lot of good information there. Um, the Line Item Budgets, uh, which is something that is a, a relatively recent addition, uh, to, uh, the information that we've made available. Uh, the Agenda Packets and Materials, uh, the Department-specific budget information, and I'll touch on these, uh, a little bit more, uh, as we go. Um, the Staff Presentations, this includes the Council Staff Presentations and, uh, the Director Presentations that you've heard through the work sessions, and then of course, the video and audio recordings of, uh, all of your meetings. So these are the, the primary links, are the ways to get to that information. First is, uh, the City's Budget Page, and then the Agendas and Minutes Page, and then the Council's Budget Page. And if we look at, uh, the Budget Page, so if you go just to ogdencity.com, the main city page, and you hover over Government, uh, a menu will, uh, pop up, and you just go down to Budgets and Finance, and this is the page that you will get to. So this includes, uh, all of the, uh, information that I referenced there, uh, quite a bit of it at least, so that's really tiny, so I apologize, but obviously be able to click on that, uh, uh, when you get to the website. So the Budget Book is there, the Mayor's Presentation is there, the Line Items, and then, uh, the Budgets for the RDA and MBA, which are separate items, but they are included on the website. Now, if you scroll down on that website a little bit, you can see all of the previous city budgets, goes back about 20 years. So I think FY 2005 to 2006 is the, uh, oldest budget we have available. So if people want to see, uh, uh, the history on that, that's available as well. So the Agendas and Minutes Page, this is going to have, uh, the agendas, uh, the presentations are available, and then the media, um, so the Facebook, the YouTube links for the, to the work sessions and the council meetings. Um, that's, uh, from that main page, you just go to that same Government tab and, and go to Agendas and Minutes, and this is under the City Council's, uh, Agendas. Then on the Council's Budget Page, we do have, uh, or on the Council's main page, we do also have a Budget Page, and this talks just a little bit more about the Council's Budget Process, um, has some other information. You can see on the left there, uh, where it says Department, uh, Information, and there, if you are interested in a specific budget or a specific department, um, our, our staff here, they isolate those things, so if you're interested in CED, you can go and you can look at all the information related to Community and Economic Development, or Fire, or Police, or Public Services, uh, you can see, uh, the packet material, the presentations, and, and the other media, uh, if you just want to focus on, on that part. So, uh, as I mentioned, the Line Item, um, this is where you can really get into a lot of the detail. Uh, this is a line item for every, every department, every division, uh, every expense really, or at least expense category in the city. Um, so there's a lot of information, uh, in the Line Items, this is revenues and expenditures. Uh, so you can see there, it has FY 23 actuals, uh, FY 24 year-to-date, uh, the council adopted, the year-to-date, if there are changes, mid-year, uh, in the budget, and then what's being proposed for FY 25, and then the difference. Now, this is a lot of really good information, it goes into a lot of detail, it tells you what's happening, but it doesn't always tell you why it's happening. You might not know why a line item is going up or down. So for that, uh, I would refer people to these Significant Changes documents, uh, that are available throughout the budget. So if you were to go through, uh, the, the Budget Book that's available on the website, there's three or four of these documents throughout, uh, but they really go into detail about what's changed and why, uh, for all of those line items, so you can really get into the detail of that. And, uh, so folks don't have to go digging through, uh, the Budget Book, uh, if you get to the Electronic Agenda for this meeting, uh, click on the Agenda Item for this particular item, I've added all of these significant documents, uh, onto the end of that, so you can see all those together. So, uh, a couple of weeks ago, I went into a bit more detail about the guiding documents that you all have, uh, as far as the budget goes. The first is the Financial Principles, that's adopted by Joint Resolution, and then the Budget Goals and- And then the budget goals and guidelines, and that is a little bit more budget-specific. And that will be developed and adopted with the final budget. So, if we get into the numbers, as I mentioned, there is a lot of information. So, this is obviously a high-level overview. But this is just a recap, a basic year-over-year comparison for the general fund revenues. There are a couple of things that I will highlight on there. The top line there, the property tax, that is estimated to go up about $783,000. $600,000 of that is new growth. And then another 183 is anticipated with a proposed increase in property taxes. I'll touch on that again in just a minute. And then that last item that you see, that other financing sources, this is where a lot of the transfers income, or it's where they show up. And one, particular one, is $1.8 million proposed to be transferred from BDO lease revenue to the general fund. And so, that shows up in that line item there. So, you can see that's partially responsible for that big increase. Overall, with all of those things, it's anticipated just over 9% increase in general fund revenues. So, the property tax increase, the mayor talked about it, and you will have plenty of time to talk about it over the next few weeks. We have not yet received our certified tax rate, so we don't know the exact numbers for everything yet. That should be coming here pretty soon. But it should be, as proposed, approximately 1% increase, which is $183,000 increase to the budget from property tax revenue, additional revenue. And this requires a truth and taxation notification and hearing process, and that is scheduled for August 6th. So, the BDO lease revenue, lease revenue transfer that I mentioned, as it's proposed, would be 12% of the lease revenue, an additional 12% of that $15 million, which is where we get the 1.8 from. And that is meant to supplement general fund wages and benefits. As it's been proposed to you, that would require an ordinance amendment for, as we call, above the line, or something that would be taken out every year. The council is definitely interested in having more discussion about that. So, we have not presented that to you in its full text, and you'll have a chance to deliberate about that before it's adopted and finalized. So, I pointed out the general fund revenues. You can see the flip side here with the general fund expenditures and the increases in each of the general fund departments, again, for that total of just over 9% increase. If folks are interested, as I mentioned, in getting into more detail in any of these budgets, all of these departments presented to you all in work sessions over the last few weeks. And again, all of that information is available on the website. So, enterprise fund comparison year-over-year, these are accounted for a little bit differently. Typically, these enterprise funds will have their own source of revenue. So, charges for services like the utilities, or fees, or medical billing, like the medical fund. All in on that is proposed to be about a 10% increase in the enterprise funds. And then the internal service funds and some of the other funds that we have, internal service funds, as the name implies, these are funds, again, accounted for a little bit differently. But these are primarily other city departments that are their customers. So, they are, they're funds that service other city departments. Just a, just a small increase there is proposed for FY 25 at just 1.71%. The capital improvement fund, I will talk about in just a minute, but that is proposed to go down. This is a project that was included in the budget, or there was a project included in the budget last year that obviously wasn't this year. It was a one-time funding, and so you can see that big reduction year-over-year. Tourism and marketing, this is the transient room tax. Miscellaneous grants, these are a lot of state and federal grants, particularly with public safety. The major grants, these are CDBG and home funds. These are the funds that you deal with, with your annual action plan. And then a couple of the other smaller funds there. So, all in, the city budget, not including the RDA and the MBA, is proposed to go up just under 5% in FY 25. So, I've started a couple of those as proposed Schedule A changes. These are the only changes we have so far. But we are recommending that you continue this public hearing for a couple of weeks so that we give you all a chance to make any other changes if you want before you adopt a finalized tentative budget. So, the first one is just an adjustment in a new position that's proposed. This is a correction that wasn't added with the initial budget that was proposed to you. And the other is a correction, or at least a truing up of the final entitlement grant numbers. And you all adopted the final annual action plan, the first part of May, that included those. So, when we get to the people who are absolutely essential in doing all the jobs and doing all the services that the city offers, the mayor has proposed new positions in the budget. There are 16 total. The one correction I will make from a couple of weeks ago is I had that senior maintenance tech in the water facilities division. I had that in the general fund, that is in the water enterprise fund. So, that is a correction from a couple of weeks ago. But there are nine in public services, one in police, four in fire and medical, and then two in management services. And again, you have heard background information on all of these proposed positions over the work sessions over the last few weeks. So, in addition to the new positions that are proposed, there are three proposed reclassifications and three proposed title changes. So, this one I wanted to show, just to let folks know how many people, how many full-time employees we have. These numbers do include those new 16 proposed positions. So, obviously, if there were a change there, these numbers would change. In the general fund, you can see there are some partial numbers. So, these are folks that are billed out of multiple funds. But all total for the general fund is 458.22. Full-time employees in the enterprise funds, 168.25. And then in the enterprise, I'm sorry, the internal service funds, 37.2. And then the grants, 33 and 1/3. Altogether, that makes 697 full-time employees, again, with those 16 new that are proposed. So, the wage and benefits, we don't unfortunately have a ton of information for you at this time. The city is finalizing an updated compensation study, and that should be coming to you within the next couple of weeks. The salary schedules are proposed to remain the same for the time being, so through July, with the exception of the justice court judges. These salaries are set by the state, so we need to get those in place before July 1st. And an updated salary schedule is expected to be adopted with the final budget in August. And again, the truth and taxation hearing is scheduled for August 6th. There are some other increases, particularly to health insurance and retirement, and the city is proposing to cover those and not pass those on to employees. So, if we look at some numbers for that, so the total general fund increases, this is wage benefit reclassification, and the added positions in the general fund is just over $3.9 million. If we look at just the proposed wage and benefit increases without the new positions, general fund is $3.1 million. All the other funds are 1.5, and then altogether, it's $4.6 million. That's proposed in the budget. So, when we look at particularly the general fund, but all the funds, how much of each of the fund goes to wage and benefit? And you can see the general fund there at the top line. With all of the funds within the general fund, all the departments, it's about 70% of the general fund goes to wage and benefit. There is one department or one, one element of the budget that's the non-departmental. These are citywide things that aren't necessarily related to a specific department. There is a small way, or payroll contingency in there. But if you take the rest of that non-departmental out and just include all the departments that actually employ people, that number jumps up to about 81% of the general fund goes to wages and benefits. Some of the other funds are more operations and project-heavy and have fewer employees. So, you can see the enterprise funds, for example, there's only 15% of that that would go to wage and benefits. Likewise, with the internal service funds, just over 20%. Miscellaneous grants, about 33%. And then the major grants, there's a small portion of those CDBG and home funds that can be used by the city to help administer those loans. So, there's a small portion that would go to wage and benefit. But overall, about 35% of the budget goes to wage and benefit. So, if we look at just graphically, each of the funds within the general fund, or each of the departments within the general fund, and what portion of their budget goes to wage and benefit, you can see a couple of those departments are very heavy on wage and benefits because they mostly just employ people. The mayor's office and legal in particular are more than 90%. Several others are more than 80%. Management services, public services, they have some project and operations costs that are a little bit bigger, so their portion is a little bit smaller. So, if we look at the capital projects, so we talked earlier today about the capital improvement plan, which is a separate approval than the projects that are actually proposed in the budget. So, this is just referring to the projects that are proposed for funding in the budget. There's 42 total CIP projects proposed for funding. Two of those are ramp projects, and 12 are one-time projects. So, there's the list there. The mayor also went over those in his presentation last month. And then the remaining 28 are what we call perpetual or ongoing projects. This are just continued improvements to the city's physical plant, so streets, sidewalks, curbs, city's utilities, parks, and buildings, things like that. So, if we look at the numbers for the capital improvement projects, there is total about $25 million proposed for capital projects in the budget. 4.3 would go into the general fund. There's just under $21 million that is from other funds. So, these includes all, includes all kinds of other funds, like WACOG funds, or BNC road funds, or active transportation funds, or utility funds. So, the water sewer projects are shown in that other funds. So, as I mentioned, all in, just over $25 million. That $25 million number doesn't include an additional $390,000 that is proposed to go from BDO lease revenue to the golf fund. So, it doesn't hit the CIP fund, which is why it's not in that number there. Another $100,000 to the airport, this is a match for federal grants, and then $150,000 to critical project contingency. If you recall, I've talked about this a couple of times. There are a couple of projects, the 36-inch canyon water line and the TSA holding room. These projects have different funding mechanisms. For example, the water line is bond funding or loan funding, and that will be recognized when we receive it. So, it's not in the budget yet. That will be part of a budget amendment when those funds are received. So, I've alluded to the reviews a little bit. If anybody is interested in going back and looking at any particular budget, these are when those things were looked at. So, the one thing I don't have on here, of course, is May 7th with the mayor's presentation to the council. But your first work session for the budget was May 14th. That included general fund revenues, BDO lease revenues. We heard from our employee groups, and then a discussion about water rates and the water discount proposal. And May 21st was CED, which included the airport and the fire department, which included the medical enterprise fund and then the legal department. And last week was management services, which included all of those internal service funds, the police department, and public services, which includes the utilities, all the parks, recreation, and all of the many things that they do. So, tonight, or earlier, you did have a chance to talk about the budget, just as far as general discussion. You'll have a chance next week and as well on June 18th. And then, as I mentioned, the compensation benefits, salary schedules. The compensation study should be ready to go and present to you the first part of July. So, you'll have work sessions July 2nd, 9th, and maybe the 16th, depending on some external events that may change that. So, we'll update that as we get a little bit closer. So, as far as actions by the council, so you've done the first, which is to set the public hearing on the tentative budget for tonight. So, that's where we are. So, you'll hold the public hearing. And as I mentioned, we are recommending that you continue this hearing until the 18th to continue your discussions, to consider comments that you hear tonight from the public. You have already set the public hearing on the enterprise fund transfers and the fee amendments. And so, those will have public hearings on the 18th as well. So, again, on the 18th, this public hearing would be continued. You would have a chance then to adopt the tentative budget with the Schedule A changes. So, the Schedule A changes are related to the tentative budget. Schedule A1 changes are related to the final. So, if you make changes to the tentative, that will be included in the A1, or in the A. And then, as you continue your discussions in July, any changes you want to make to the final will be part of the A1 changes. So, the salary schedules for the justice court judges, as I mentioned, you'll have an opportunity to adopt the fee amendments as they've been proposed to you. And then, hold the public hearing on the enterprise funds transfers. If you recall, there's no action on this. It's just a public hearing. So, the approval of the funds takes place with the approval of the budget. But it is a public hearing that is required. And then, you would set the public hearing on that final budget for August 6th. And because there's a primary election on the 25th, we typically don't hold meetings on election days. So, as of right now, we are not planning on holding a council meeting on June 25th. So, as we get into July, which is a little bit later than the typical budget season goes, but because we're going through the truth and taxation process, you have some additional time. June 16th, again, that's tentative, sounds like that might change. We would anticipate at some point around there, you would set the public hearing on those updated salary schedules. And then, of course, on August 6th, you would hold the public hearing on the final budget, and then adopt any changes with the A1 schedule, and consider the updated salary schedules, and of course, adopt the certified tax rate. And because you're going through the certified tax rate process, you do need to have a final budget in place by September 1st. So, that's all I've got for you. I'd be happy to answer any questions that I can. If I can't answer those, I may try to recruit some of the folks in the back to get the right answer.
Thank you, Glenn. Any questions at this point? Okay. Thank you. Thank you. So, this is a public hearing, and we just would like to encourage, first of all, we welcome public comments and participation. Certainly would like to request an atmosphere of mutual respect and stability during the proceedings tonight. We value all opinions that are shared, as long as they're done so in a civil manner. The council will not tolerate personal attacks, rudeness, disrespectful comments, insults, name-calling, or belittling comments. It's not intended to be a question-and-answer period either. And so, we try to take as many notes as we can of the ideas or any questions that come about. And following the public comments, we then take, take the chance to address those if the council feels there are items that need to be addressed or questions that need to be answered. And so, with that, for anyone online, you just raise your hand on the Zoom meeting. And for those in person, if you want to come to the podium, you can address the council on this issue. And we just ask that you limit your comments to three minutes to allow time for everyone.
My name's Jack Crossland. Live in Ogden. Have a, I'm not supposed to ask a question, but I have a question about your below-the-line funds from the BDO going to, quote, "above the line." Does that mean that that would be permanent, or is that just a one-time deal?
Thank you.
Hi. My name is James Edwards. I live in Ogden. Unfortunately, I'm not here on the greatest of terms. I feel that Ogden City Police has not done a justified job of protecting its public. I received a property back in 2022. I have made over 20 calls to OPD. I have only received six case numbers. The only time that I have received any help, that seems like it may actually make a difference, is talking to the chief of police today. I believe that this gentleman over here, here, talking about the funds for public service, I think you need to dedicate more towards law enforcement because they're way overstaffed, or way understaffed. I have been threatened with violence in Ogden. My car has been vandalized, causing me to crash on I-15. I have contacted the mayor's office. I have not spoken to him yet. I hope to do so. I hope to make Ogden a better and safer place. But I am at a loss if the police do not do anything. And the last thing I want to do is be inside a courtroom pleading for my safety and trying to justify me doing what was right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello all. My name's Sarge Morielli. I've been working with Ogden City folks for 10 years now about some of these issues. Streets need to be maintained before we continue to have big holes in the road. These holes will cause damage to vehicles. Folks can get hurt walking and riding bikes. And who will be charged for the damage or injuries? Ogden City will. Ogden City wants to fine folks for not taking care of their property. According to Ogden City rules, Ogden City owns 10 feet of our property. According to Ogden City rules, Ogden City owns 10 feet of our property from the curb 10 feet back. We cannot do anything with that part of our property. Does that mean us citizens can fine Ogden City for not trimming dead branches down and clearing important street signs? Downed branches and dead branches can cause damage to vehicles, and folks can get hurt. Can we fine Ogden City for not repairing downstreet signs? Ogden City needs to put two stop signs on the corner of 29th and Polk heading East and West. I've hollered at Ogden City for so long on that because we've got so many idiots speeding up and down the road, running into fences over there at Ogden High School. We've got elderly people, we've got kids, we've got disabled people. It needs to be done. I paid $1,200 to help our neighbor get the tree trimmed by the street since Ogden City has refused to do it. I've been on Ogden City for about eight years just to get that tree trimmed, all of the dead branches removed and things like that. I had to pull the $1,200 out of my hind end. Why doesn't Ogden City make part of 25th Street for people walking and farmers market only? Take and charge people a parking fee in the parking lot behind 25th Street between 25th and 24th and Grant and Lincoln. It'll be a lot less of a mess, and we will not have to worry about OPD giving false tickets that I was a victim of. Finally, Chief Young needs to do away with the point system. We have lost good officers because of his BS. Officers get promoted because of the good job that they do, i.e. give real tickets for speeding, running red lights, et cetera, getting involved with the public, especially getting involved with the kids and helping them learn right from wrong. I've talked with several OPD officers on this, and they are behind me 100%. I would almost bet that I could do a better job than Chief Young, and yes, I have talked to OPD too. Chief Young, Officer Miller have been removed from the Christmas card cookie list.
Thank you, Sarge. Appreciate it. Any other comments?
Chair, I make a motion that we close the public hearing on this item.
I'll second it.
Oh, actually, I will make a motion to continue the hearing to June 18th on this item.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Hire to continue the public hearing on this item to June 18th, and a second by Councilmember Myers. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. All right, so a couple of, a question on the BDO lease revenue. Glenn, do you want to address that item?
Yeah, thank you. So the question is about what I call below the line or above the line, and that's just kind of an informal way to talk about that. But yeah, it's absolutely right that we do have an ordinance that does state that from the BDO lease revenue we get, we do pay certain things before other money is decided, like capital projects. So there's a handful of things like debt for service that come out before, before, above the line, before we get to other things like capital projects and some other things. And so the proposal for the transfer, again, as it's proposed, would be above the line. That would come out by statute before we get to those other things. So that would be an ordinance amendment.
And that would be a permanent, not a one-time, essentially, as it currently reads.
Yes, and you can approve one time, but again, as proposed, it would be permanent. Yeah.
Yeah. And then a whole number of other items, I think, administrative in nature, and I don't know if Mayor Nadolsky, if you want to look at those or have any comment on any of that at this point. We agree, our officers work hard. We have the highest, both for place and fire, the highest number of calls per officer in the state. And so it is, it is a challenge.
That's correct. Thanks, Mr. Chair. I can't speak to the COVID issues. I'd have to follow up on those, but the concern about the police quota, that's something that we've been addressing in prior meetings. The chief has, well, I asked the chief, I said, I'd like to evaluate our officers in a way that maintains accountability, something that is measurable, and I wanted a solution that was data-driven. So he has formed a committee within the department to review a bunch of data that they pulled from the Real-Time Crime Center, the ATAC is what it's called now. So they're evaluating some new metrics, and the committee's making recommendations to me. I've said a number of times that we'll put those in place with the new fiscal year because that's when new performance evaluations begin and end, they coincide with the fiscal year. So there's no fiscal reason for it, other than we've gone almost an entire year of performance evaluation, and we're not going to change our metrics and therefore make it hard for us to have a performance evaluation process for the fiscal year. So the recommendation should be coming here shortly, and we'll make sure it's in place for the July 1 and on. So that's the update there.
Yeah, thank you. And there was more information shared by Chief Young in the work session last week? This whole timeline is crazy. Two weeks ago. And so you're welcome to check that, you know, recording out, and he addresses that. Okay, any other questions or comments or discussion among the council before we move on to the public comments?
Chair, on the other item.
Oh, yeah.
From Mr. Edwards, I'll have to look into that as well, and I'll get an update from the chief on the conversation that happened today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll invite public comments. Again, same spiel. We'd like to maintain a level of mutual respect and dignified responses in this section. It's not intended to be a question-and-answer series deal, but if you'd like to step to the podium and limit your comments to three minutes, address the council on any issue, this is the time to do that. And if you're online, go ahead and raise your hand.
Sorry, my voice is a little weak right now, so can't do much yelling. But my name's Kerry Wayne. I'm your neighbor across the street over in Marys-Slaterville, across from Caldwell Canal, across from the headwaters of the BDO and soggy bottoms. Again, we've been asking over and over again for a solution to be taken on the drainage over on 1200 West. We went with eight months of water over there, constant, and again, we're not seeing any kind of movement. I'm being told to, again, address this with Marys-Slaterville. Marys-Slaterville, what do you want us to do? We, you know, we don't have the money for it. We don't have property tax. We can't do it. The damage was done by Boyer, and so you guys are making money off of what they did. And so all we're asking is if you would take, and at least, I have, I have email from Mark Johnson, also have an email from Chris Chamiat, saying that they were going to bring out city engineers to see what they could do, to see what they could, how to address the problem. Again, there's also been some movement with Marys-Slaterville. They're looking to improve the roadway because of the fact that it's highly traveled. Again, we have the water coming right up the edge of the roadway. It's inexcusable to keep leaving it this way. And it's been, I sent you photos of clear back in 2021 of how the water is. And every time it rains, we get, you know, like I say, a month ago, I sent the mayor a note, I said, would you please call Bill Morris and at least have him explain to you the vision that they have for doing something after the drainage is fixed to make that roadway, improve that roadway, and make it so that we can recover a bit of our property value. You guys killed us on our property value. We, the neighbors, they were, they were raised on that property over there, BDO. And then now they have to look at a, you know, concrete wall. The idea is that it shouldn't be this hard. We shouldn't have to come and beg, and we shouldn't have to, you know, again, you're not talking to Marys-Slaterville. I've called them, I talked to Bill yesterday, haven't heard from them. And, you know, they've been playing this game for 22 years. Ogden does not talk to them, and so nothing gets done. And so why can't we, and again, it's the administration has to take the lead on actually doing something. In the shared values, we talked about integrity, about doing what you said you're going to do, trust, you know, putting action to words. And we were promised by Mark Johnson that he would look into this. He told the Standard Examiner December 22, and nothing's happened. Nothing has happened. Not a shovel load of dirt has happened. And so we're looking for you to get engaged, to do something and make this thing right because it wasn't Marys-Slaterville's fault. It was maybe not even Ogden's fault, but Boyer covered up the drainage, and it needs to get fixed. Okay?
Thank you, Kerry.
Thank you very much.
Okay. And nobody online? So, all right. Yeah, any comments from administration or council members?
Where do I begin? I'm going to be really careful so I don't say something I regret. But I said I'd do everything that I can, and I am. And what information you're getting is not truthful nor complete. I don't know where you think we're going to get millions of dollars to fix a project in another city. We're going through the budget. Tell me if you can find it. I said that I would support a project to submit to WACOG for funds from the county that would require Marys-Slaterville to do the work, to submit the project, and that I would support that. Thank you, Chair Ritchie, for sitting on the Transportation Subcommittee alongside me and for your support along with mine for this very project. The process requires that you submit a letter of intent as a city that's submitting the project was done. And I told you, and I did, because I have integrity that I committed to in my shared values, that I'd support it. So now it moves to the next process. WACOG will be scheduling a field tour for those that are voting on the projects. We're going to spend an entire day looking at that project and others. And I talked to the mayor last night and said, Mayor, you got my support on that project, regardless of the letters to the editor that are written about me, because I said I would. Therefore, I did and I will, if there's support from Marys-Slaterville, to do their part. My councilmates or members have made it clear to me they don't want to spend a half million dollars on a project outside of our city for curbing gutter and sidewalk or street repairs or drainage repairs similar to what we need in our city. But I did commit to support the city staff in Marys-Slaterville to do that project, and we are. The next step is for them to develop the project with the details for WACOG to consider and for Chair Ritchie and I to consider alongside our peers on WACOG. Okay? I can't do that overnight. I don't set the timelines, but I am doing what I said.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? So then I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Waived.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hire to adjourn, and second by Councilmember Blair, and this is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned.